I'd like to call this meeting to order. The mission of the Freehold Township School District is to honor and support every learner every day on the journey to become curious and engaged members of a diverse global community. A notice assisting the time and place of this meeting was posted on the public bulletin board of all Freehold Township schools, on the entrance door to the administrative offices of the Board of Education, on the district website, at the office of the Freehold Township Clerk, published in the Asbury Park Press on January 11th, 2025, and sent to the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2025. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call? Ms. Brand, Ms. Dr. Casey, Ms. Crosby, Ms. George Jerome, Ms. Lambert, Ms. Spear, Ms. Williams, Ms. O'Sullivan, Ms. Jeremiah Robinson. Yeah. We have a forum. Mind if I just move the minutes right now? Can I get a motion for the approval of the March 11th? Do I get a meeting minutes? Second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed or any abstentions? Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of the March 11th executive session meeting minutes? Any second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Just our two conflicting numbers. Your name, Mrs. Spear. Okay, I'm going to leave the meeting for five minutes and we're gonna convene in the gym and I'll see you guys all over there.
I'd like to open the meeting back up. Can I hit the bullying investigation report? Since the last meeting, we had three reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and all three were confirmed. I'd also like to thank our community for their support of our referendum. The issues that we were experiencing and continue to experience until we get these projects underway have been causing several of us to lose some sleep. Many of our parents at specific schools are very familiar with the issues of our infrastructure. Unfortunately, due to the experiences that their children have been having relative to heat, mold, air conditioning issues, electrical issues, and those things do keep us up at night. Right, Mr. DeVita? Please.
We do.
We care a great deal about our staff and our students, and this was extremely necessary in order to give our students the program that they need and deserve in an environment that's safe and conducive to learning, and our staff and environment that is safe and conducive to doing what they do best, working with our students and teaching our students. So, thank you to our community for successfully passing it up on referendum. This evening, I would also like to recognize an achievement among our students in structured literacy programs. Each year, students who are in our structured literacy programs use Learning Ally, and Learning Ally supports a program called the Great Reading Games. This year, our school district had two buildings placed in the top 10 in their bracket of Learning Ally's Great Reading Games 2025, and we have a student who also is a national award winner. So, Erickson ranked fourth in their bracket and will receive a $100 prize. Wes Freehold ranked eighth in their bracket, and they will receive $50. And a student at Barkley Middle School read 25,206 pages during the period in which the games were conducted, and that is Riley Moore from Barkley Middle School. Just a comparison, that student read 25,206 pages. The schools that won the awards cohesively, comprehensively, those students at Erickson read 41,400 pages, and Wes Freehold 64,392 pages. That's a whole heck of a lot of reading, and our students...
Excellent. Let's see, our reading score go up maybe a half a point.
Yeah.
What do you think? Never know. Cameras weren't rolling in the other room, but for those watching, I did give my congratulations to Mr. Dixie, Mr. DeVita, actually all administrators, Dr. Brian Howard, Montgomery. I just want to thank you on behalf of the board for all the work you did on the referendum outside of your normal business hours. I know it was a grueling process, and we really do appreciate you. And I think the residents of your township really do appreciate you. I know there wasn't a great turnout for the vote, but the right people did turn out. There were enough people that came out to say, you know what? We're going to stand for our students. We're going to stand for our town. We're not going to let our infrastructure crumble, and we're going to send our school equality buildings for our students and for our families. So, I do want to thank you personally and on behalf of the board. With that, I'm going to now open the meeting to public... Oh, do you have...
I have one thing I have to do.
Sorry?
All right. On that note, so whenever the board, when I go to the county and declare a facility emergency and they grant it, when you are done with it, then you have to report back to the board in terms of what your costs were and what all the results were. So, when we contacted the county in August of '24 about the mail situation over at Donovan, we started compiling the costs. So, we spent about $1.1 million between the abatement cost, the IAQ testing services, and full replenishment of some of the things that were thrown out during the process. We had whiteboards that were, especially on the derby side wing, that had, you know, they couldn't be cleaned in time. We threw them out. There were some cabinets and some bookshelves, some tack boards, some rugs. There were, in the very beginning, Mr. Dixie, I'm sure he probably has nightmares about this still, when we were trying to open for August, we made unilateral decisions of, all right, when in doubt, throw it out. So, there were things that we tossed out in the hopes of getting school open. There were some curriculum books and some other books that were thrown out. So, about $1.1 million was spent on this emergency. So, about $1.1 million was spent on this emergency. The insurance company recognized all but $150,000 of those costs, and what they didn't recognize was the initial cleaning that didn't result in, it failed, and then we had to go back out for the second company to come back and remediate. They didn't recognize some of the costs for the initial IAQ tests that were done. We uncovered, removed some of the bookcases and the shelves. There was a very small section in one room revealed nine-by-nine asbestos tiles, which we said, well, if it's exposed right now, we might as well get rid of it. That was $5,000. So, they didn't recognize a very small portion of this. So, the total they did recognize was about $971,000. You reduce the $250,000 deductible, which we spoke about, it's solely based upon, at this time, the age of your building, and so at the end, we were reimbursed $721,000. So, it's helped, the budget's in much better shape than it was. I mean, I borrowed from the accounts, you all gave us the blessing to move out, and additional $400,000 remains reserved. Some of that money will go back to the maintenance reserve account come June 30th, but I think we learned a lot from this process, and we know going forward for the summer, the insurance company wants to have a couple of trainings with our staff, our maintenance team, which we're more than happy to do. We know that through some conversation with the IAQ expert from the NJEA, we're going to make sure most of our dampers are closed, we're going to control more of the air than what we've done in the past. But, of course, as I said, we do have to do this report, it's required in code when we declare emergency. So, but it's over, and we're looking forward to moving forward with our referendum, getting new equipment, and not having this ever happen again. So, you have a question, Mr. Williams?
I do. So, the amounts that we weren't able to recoup, $150,000, $200,000, again, I know you threw a lot of numbers out of your mouth.
It's about $150,000.
So, say $150,000. Any thought of going to the state, because they do have a fund to get us, you know, there's money there for this. Reach out to Senator Powell, see if we can recoup some of that $150,000 and see if we can get this whole.
I believe, and Mr. Dixie correct me wrong, he did reach out early on, or somebody on behalf reached out, and when they...
It's not as clean as just reach out to get money back. It's if you're in a situation where your district is in need and can't spend the money on what was needed and you need support, then reach out. So, he did contact me, and we...
So, I did speak to him early on, not ask for anything, I never asked for anything. I just said, hey, this is what's going on, and he had said, whatever, whatever I can do to help.
I think that's during the time of the emergency. I don't think that they're in a position where they reimburse for what you did. I think it's during the emergency if you couldn't come up with the funds.
The difficult part, I think, we have is we have a very robust maintenance reserve account, and, you know, we talked about during the budget process, in the past few years, we've done $300,000 for the budget. We can look again, but I don't, I think the part of the conversation was Neil came up, haven't you have maintenance reserve? When I told him, I went, yeah, I don't think this is going to work.
I mean, you know, we obviously know the residents support us by action of the referendum. We should shake every tree if there's money there for us. But in this particular case, I think we should try to get it. That's my thought. And if we can make that $1.1 million whole, we're going to end up at the same place that we're not ready to have, so.
I can reach out to him, but he told us, based on the amount we have in capital was in maintenance reserve, we wouldn't be eligible. But I can ask him again, it would likely be the same answer, it hasn't changed.
Yeah, we're fortunate that we've been, we're in the spot that we are, and we were able to manage it, and that we weren't a small district or an S2 district that would, but...
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. With this time, I'd like to open the floor for public participation. I'm agenda item Zomner. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please write your name and address on the assignment sheet and state your name for the record. Statements are limited to three minutes and should not be abusive, obscene, or defamatory in nature. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to go to Personnel, Policy, and Communications, Mrs. Spear.
Good evening. So, we had our meeting today, and in attendance was myself, Dr. Todd Casey, Jeff Williams, and Dr. Brethauer. And I'd like to move the following on the agenda. We met, and we discussed what would be up for a first reading, next, next meeting, and so that stuff is to follow in the email, okay? And as per Dr. Casey, he was mentioning about an AI policy, and he's going to review that, and that's something that'll be addressed for next year, the way it's good. In the meeting, right? Okay, so I'd like to remove number two, committee meeting, as listed. Number three, adjust start date as listed. Number four, interim guidance counselor as listed. Number five, rescind offer of long-term assignment as listed. Number six, unpaid days as listed. Number seven, leaves of absence. Number eight, salary adjustments. Number nine, salary account update. Number 10, change of assignment as listed. Number 11, temporary change of assignment as listed. Number 12, affirm bullying investigation finding as listed. Number 13, student-teacher practicum observation placement as listed. Number 14, curriculum committee as listed. Number 15, certified substitutes as listed. Number 16, non-certified substitutes as listed.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions? Seeing none, I got a real call.
Mr. Brand? Dr. Casey?
Here.
Ms. Crosby? Ms. Gojula?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear?
Here. Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Amoroso?
Yes.
Motion care.
Thank you.
Okay. Curriculum committee, Mrs. Brand.
Yes. Good evening. So, the curriculum committee did not meet this evening, and the committee members are Ms. Crosby, Ms. O'Sullivan, and Ms. Rebecca Montgomery, myself. I'd like to move course reimbursement as listed. Number three, 2024, 2025 field trip list update as listed. Number four, home instruction as listed. That's it.
Wonderful. We love the ally of community farm. Do you have a second?
Second.
And do you have any questions for curriculum? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Our finance facilities, transportation, Mrs. Lambert?
Good evening. The finance facilities and transportation committee did meet this evening, and attendance was myself, Mr. Amoroso, Mr. Gojula, Mr. DeVita, and Ms. Williams. And we had quite the agenda. So, we discussed, now that the bond referendum has passed, we discussed the tentative schedule for the projects that the bond referendum is going to fund. These projects must be completed by law within five years, so we talked about what this was going to look like, and I'll be as brief as possible. Over the next, I would say, over this summer, right, hopefully, the first two roofs by the end of August should be worked on, ECLC and Katina, they are the smallest. We're hoping to go into a certain bid for that, where we can have one warranty district-wide. The remaining roofs will take place next summer. Second part of the work, the HVAC bids, we need to consult with our attorneys as for how we're going to do the structure for the HVAC bids, and they'll be spread throughout two summers when we finally get that work started. Third leg of the work would be the security work and the pod conversion, and that will be spread over three summers. What this is all going to look like is still in the very early stages, but attempts to keep the public informed via progress tracking on the website is the goal. Mr. DeVita is going to look into that and talk to everybody. We've talked about the fees involved in terms of paying our architects, Bezel, and what that looks like. I have all those numbers if any of the board members are interested. Also, we have to talk about going out for bid for a construction manager and what that interview process is going to look like. So, Mike will get into more detail about that, whether we're going to form an ad hoc committee for this construction work only and carve it out of finance, because it does take up a considerable amount of time in the finance meeting. And this way, when we do switch committees in January, one ad hoc committee would provide consistency through this process, you know, as much as possible. So, also, on the May 14th agenda, you'll probably see a 30-page resolution for the issuance of the bonds. Valence will publish the bonds on the bond bar, there will be an electronic sale, and after that, Bob will meet with S&amp;P and Moody's, which are the bond rating agencies, to get that in place. Bob's also got several meetings lined up with the bank that will hold the money, invest the money, as is required. There's a lot going on in the business office right now with regard to that. Anybody have any other questions about where we stand with the referendum or the timeline? Please feel free to reach out. I'll get your answers as quickly as possible, but by May 12th, Bob should have a better layout of what the timeline's going to look like before we put the bond resolution on the agenda May 14th. The other item we discussed was food service policy 8500. I know that that was also, we have a couple of things going on with food service. Most of the changes that were made were to comply with the current law. One of the newer changes were that parents will now need to sign a firm refusal acknowledging that they received the offer to apply for free and reduced lunch. On the flip side of that, the paperwork is a little bit less because the state is tracking these students, and there's some automatic students that we have that we're already tracking. Also, both middle schools will be required to serve breakfast. We fall into that category, so that's, when does that begin?
Next year.
Next year.
September.
Okay, in September. We don't have prices yet. In terms of the food service contract, we have a 2.5% increase on the management fee, the guarantee will remain the same, and we don't have prices on the lunch yet, but that should be coming shortly. We don't anticipate a price increase of more than, what, five cents, you think?
Five, 10 cents.
Five cents, five, 10 cents.
We have more control because we have cash reserves in districts that aren't making money or breaking even, so at least, that's when I did a quick number on that, but we're waiting for the state's official tool to come out that we use, so I'm guessing the more than that.
So, I mean, and then we discussed the remaining items on the agenda. Obviously, there was a lot of stuff. If you have any questions, just reach out to me. With that, I'd like to move that committee report, item number one, and the committee meeting. Item number three, bills and claims in the amount of $6,6,243.09, which were approved by?
Mrs. Brand.
Mrs. Brand, thank you very much. Transfers as listed. Item number five, the consultants. Item number six, consultant updates as listed. And item number seven, a donation of $500 from Petroleum Marketing Group for the Abrogate School. We thank you, Petroleum Marketing Group.
Very good.
Any questions?
Do you have a second?
Second.
No questions for Michelle and Bob? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Or business?
Rockmusical happened after our last meeting, with the meetings in between. Yes, it was. Got to see Shark at Barcolin, awesome job. Did a really great job with that, it was really, really fun. Good job. I all there. And then, one little note on the referendum, I know that a lot of our staff, a lot of our staff, a lot of our staff, and I thank every single one of them personally for the work that they did, but I do, unfortunately, he had to, he left, he was in the other room. When I was going, and I didn't want to say anything at the last meeting, just in case it did not pass, but now that it did pass, when I was at the Eisenhower play, Mr. Krupp asked every single person that came through those doors for three shows, are you a Freehold resident? Yes, no? If he got a yes, he immediately handed him one of the flyers. So, I want to just personally give, again, I saw this with my own eyes. I can't speak to all of it, but I totally watched. Funny shot on Mr. Krupp for what he did. He stood at the front door, literally asked every single person that came through those doors.
That embodies John Krupp right there.
That's what it is here, you have the true general.
And I don't want to, I just said, I'm not taking sides. He has a staff member, that understands, every effort was appreciated. This, I got to...
Well, we had, we had the fire, the fire for the town.
That is who he is, and we thank him.
He made them available.
My brother, my brother-in-law, my sister, every single person that came through that door, asked.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp.
Thank you. Excellent. And there's the, this Friday, we have the Future Chef. Did everybody get to eat on Thursday? I usually do that, I can't make it, if anybody...
Do the job.
You got it?
When there's food involved, first one's...
Excellent, love it. If anybody else, I don't know if they, you meet any other people, but keep that in mind. It went out a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just a follow-up. The original one was posted about, well...
Well, you got Cupcake Wars and the other...
There's plenty of them.
That should be coming up.
Plenty of them, so...
It's just like...
Do we have any...
Great, it's great, but after a little while, that's a rough one, Cupcake Wars.
They did Cupcake Wars at Erickson, very yummy.
The one, me and Neil were the tasters last year, it's a marathon.
Excellent. Do you have any news on this? Okay, President's remarks. The only thing I'll say during this time is to piggyback off of what Michelle started believing to at the referendum. We were 10 years into the last referendum, I think Michelle and I were about 10 years before, it was in 2000, 2001, right? So, we joined the board, it had already been about 10 years since they were in the referendum. But for those first few years that we were on the board, we saw some of the ramifications of what had gone on with that, and there was a learning experience going on. People were like, hey, you know, keep an eye on your construction manager, you know, keep an eye on this and that. You kind of learn from those meetings a little bit about what had gone on, you want to learn from that, you want to do it right this time. Now, I think Bob has a great handle, he's got tremendous experience in how this, how this whole process works, but I'd like to learn as much as we can from what happened last time and try to correct that behavior this time. I think we're already starting out on a great foot. I think the idea of creating this separate committee, and I'm going to ask all of you if you have interest in serving on that committee, maybe send me an email and say, hey, you know what, I think I'd like to be a member of that committee, and then I'll get some feedbacks, see how many people are actually interested. And I think, to Michelle's point, it's good to have that be separate. There's elections that go on every year, some of us may or may not even be here, but there is that continuity piece that I think is important, so I do agree with that, and we're also worried about the amount of workload that that might take, it might completely overtake the finance committee meeting, like we spend the whole time talking about that, we didn't even hear about other district problems. So, there's enough work there, and it's probably not going to ramp up until about the summer, so it's not anything that we have to do right now, but probably by midsummer, I'd like to solidify how many people we want, who's interested, and then I will probably set up that ad hoc committee, just so people kind of know that process. And one of the other things we were tossing around is the idea of having some interviews at the board meeting for the construction management team. And I'm leaning towards maybe having Bob and maybe that committee narrow it down to maybe two candidates, and maybe we bring those two candidates in, and they could speak to the whole board, and we can all listen and decide if, you know, we like one person versus the other. Because what I did learn, that role is vital, so we want to make sure that whoever is monitoring the actual implementation, looking at the specs, talking with the architects, watching what's getting built in the field, making sure that what is being built was what was specified, preventing problems, it's a critical role. Because we can't do that as board members, Bob can't do that, our staff can't do that. So, just keep those thoughts going. So, there's some new things that this board will be working on that boards don't always have to work on, but over the next three years, we're probably going to have this side committee working along with our other committees. So, just something to think about. Another thing is, we're getting close to the superintendent evaluation, so shortly, within the next few weeks, Neil's going to complete his section, and then I'll keep the board informed as to when you could log in. as to when you can log in and do your evaluations, just so that we meet the timelines that are mandated. That's pretty much all I have. So with that, I'm going to go to public participation of any type. So if there's anyone that would like to address the board, please write your name and address on the sign-in sheet and state your name for the record. And statements are limited to three minutes and should not be abusive, obscene, or defamatory in nature. Do we have any takers for the podium?
Right.
Seeing none, then this board is going to move into an executive session.
You could do this.
Whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:412B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting in which the board addresses any of the matters described in NJSA 10:412B 1-9. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the personnel and legal exemptions prescribed by NJSA 10:412 for the purpose of discussing the following matters: pending or anticipated contract negotiations, FTEA negotiations. It is anticipated that the length of time of this executive session will be 45 minutes, and that action will not be taken in public after the executive session. Be it further resolved, that said discussion may be disclosed to the public, and reasons for discussing and acting upon an enclosed session no longer exist. Do you all have a second? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks, for coming out.